Thank you for coming. I did want to let you know in case you did not realize it, but we are having an annual budget hearing first. And so I would like to introduce our Director of Finance and Operations Cheryl Northam to handle this portion. I will say that there will be a hearing, but this part of the hearing is specific to the budget. We will have the public participation later in the meeting when you have other concerns outside of the budget. So take it away Cheryl.
Well, I think you said exactly what I was going to say. And the purpose of the budget hearing is to allow the public to have some input on the budget document that was approved by the Budget Committee, which includes our school board, to ask any questions that you might have about the school budget for next year.
That being said, do we have any questions from the public concerning our budget? Okay, we do not. That concludes our budget hearing. We adjourned that part of the meeting, and now we're opening up our regular board meeting. So we are blessed to have Colin Fairbanks. He's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Colin. You did a wonderful job. We appreciate it. Okay, do we have any members of the media online or present? We would like you to introduce yourself. Does not look like it. Okay. Please mute your cell phones and just a reminder for those on the board, be sure to turn your mic on when you speak and turn it off when you're finished. And right now, we will have our report from Principal Thompson.
Okay, welcome. Welcome to Hughcrest. I'm Jennifer Thompson. I have been the principal at Hughcrest for, this is my second year, and previously I was at Eastwood. So at your places, there were goodie bags. Those actually were the goodie bags that were given to all of the kindergarteners at kindergarten roundup this year for Hughcrest. So there's a little book in there that's all about being a kindergartner at Hughcrest, and then there's some practice, like writing their numbers, because that's something that they do every single day in kindergarten, and a little jelly bracelet. So we thought that you would like appreciate being welcomed, just like our kinders were to Hughcrest. So can advance. So we primarily live in the appropriate and timely instruction section of the strategic plan and try and get all students to receive the care and support that they need. And part of that is, you can advance. Part of that is our goal of having our vision for student experience, and it's really like not just student experience, but like staff and families and everything, is that we live by the core values of the Hock letters, which are honorable, accountable, wise, and kind. And this year, we adopted a new logo. This is Huey. So Huey Hock is in your kindergarten social storybook, and he also is all around campus too. So it has kind of like, it is started to like, I mean, Hughcrest obviously had a pretty strong culture before, and then when there's new leadership and 60% of the staff members were new with me last year, that we kind of like needed a like a little revitalization of like what Hughcrest is all about. And so Huey is our little symbol of family and I don't know, like what it is to be a Hock. All right, advance. Okay, so data, our previous data, we have our, the same goals, sections as everyone, literacy, math, and path to graduation, which is attendance. So previously in the spring of 2024, 55% of our third through fifth graders were at or above benchmark for the ELA state test. 46% of our students three through five had passed the math OSAS. And then our regular attenders, who are kids who are at school 90% or more of the time, was 76%. So we made a goal. Next slide. That by the end of this school year, we would be up to 55% of our students passing ELA and 50% of our students passing for math. And then we were really hoping for 84% regular tenders. Next slide. And we did really great in ELA. We have some preliminary data, which isn't public yet, but the preliminary data does indicate that we will likely meet the goal of having, oh my gosh, now I can't remember what was on the last slide. Thanks, 55% of our students meeting. A special shout out to fifth grade. Fifth grade OSAS preliminary scores are like blowing that 55% out of the water. Like, oh wow, super exciting, can't wait until those numbers are made public. And then another bright spot in the literacy data is that first grade actually had 80% of the students at or above grade level for reading dibbles, which is like the kind of like the benchmark at each part of each school year about like if you get this to this point, you're like on your track to being a good reader. And 80% is a really impressive number for dibbles. So super proud of that. And goal two is math, having 50% of our third through fifth graders pass the state test. And preliminary data does not indicate that that is going to happen. However, we do still have some bright spots. Fourth grade is definitely likely to meet that 50% passing for OSAS. And the other, another measure that we use is our iReady diagnostic data. And 63% of the students in the whole school K5 were at or above benchmark for math. So when we, when we like put in our K1, two kids, and it's a different assessment, but it was a good indicator that we're headed in the right direction with our math scores. So and then path to graduation, our attendance was super sad. Man, there was some serious germs going around this year. But our regular attenders did dip to 72%. But I don't think that that completely tells the, the story of exactly like the work that we've done on attendance. So for example, here's just like a couple little bright spots. We have a second grader who had 53% attendance. And then he kind of like came in January or something, and we put in an intervention for him where he goes to the skills trainer's office every morning and does his morning work in the skills trainer's office. And so now he's, since spring break, he's been on time to school most days, and he's got up to 92% attendance since we put that intervention in place for him. And so like, his number is still going to be like in the definitely less than 90% attendance. But like, yeah, he's like, what a, what a great win. Another really super great story is a family of three kids here, and they had had 70% attendance. And we worked with the family and got grandma involved, and since, also since spring break, they have improved their attendance to 92%. So it's like, there's definitely some wins and some things that we've been doing to like improve that attendance, even though our number is still a little bit sad. Okay, next slide. So our focus this year to improve our ELA and math scores has been around, oh, I'm like, what does that say? I wrote it. That we've been focusing on success criteria, which is the way for students to be able to measure their own progress toward the learning target identified for the lesson. And so, and then next year, we're actually taking that to the, to the next step. And both of these, like this is obviously from the 5D instructional framework that students need to be able to take ownership of their learning, and the locus of control of the learning needs to be with the students. And so by giving them the success criteria, it's like, this is where you need to be. And like helping them assess their own learning, that develops that ownership. And then next year, we are moving toward incorporating peer assessment, which kind of like takes it to the next level even. And then our attendance, we do the Monday morning message. We have celebrations for the class was with the best attendance, individual interventions, like I talked about earlier. So we will continue that work next year, and hopefully those germs stay away. Oh, that's it.
Are there any questions? Questions, comments?
The question I had was just about your all-school attendance. It's a challenging issue. Do you just, we just have spots at Hughcrest that are moving into the 90s. But is, is this percentage what you're looking for at, as this year, 72%?
73% of the students, yeah, my last report, 73% of the students had met that 90% or better attendance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Principal Thompson. Okay. If you're planning on speaking during public participation and you have not yet filled out a card, they're in the back if you would like to, to put that, write that, fill that in for us so that we can have that information. Right now, we have student and staff recognition, and we're thrilled to recognize students and staff being honored by their schools for outstanding achievement in moving our strategic plan forward. And tonight, we have Director Andrew Shirkcliff, who will be presenting the Student Recognition Awards.
First up, from Roseburg High School, 10th grade, Kenna Mudge. Yeah, if all the, any staff from the high school come up here, anybody who's here, and parents and family, come on up. Kenna stands out as one of the hardest working students at RHS. She dedicates herself fully to her schoolwork, showing impressive focus, detail, and drive. Kenna balances her academics with equal passion for sports, friends, and family. Her friendly, respectful nature, quick sense of humor, and leadership make her a joy to be around. Most of all, her positive attitude and bright smile bring energy and engagement to the classroom every single day. Congratulations, Kenna. And next up, we have from Hughcrest Elementary School, Savannah Kirkman, 5th grade. Savannah enjoys playing soccer and basketball. She loves art, reading, and band. She's a keyboardist. Her favorite thing about school is meeting new people and making new friends. Ms. Yonker says Savannah is a classroom leader that enjoys making partners feel heard. Ms. Bain says Savannah is a gifted writer that enjoys including vivid details. Mr. Kelso says Savannah is amazing. Recently, the class commented that no one could memorize and identify the 50 states in under three minutes. Savannah came back the next day with all 50 memorized and identified in one minute and eight seconds. Pretty impressive. Mr. Horowitz said Savannah is one of the most polite and respectful students I've ever had. She inspires me to work harder. She is that good. When she grows up, Savannah would like to be an archaeologist, and we can't wait to see what amazing treasures she digs up. Congratulations, Savannah.
Am I on? Okay. The light is red instead of green. It's a different mic. That's okay. That's okay. We are now going to celebrate Heather Yonker, 5th grader from Hughcrest. Wait a minute.
The 5th grade teacher.
5th grade teacher. Oh my goodness, thank you. Okay. Oh, sorry about that. Okay. So Heather is a dedicated teacher who strives to meet her students' needs. She seeks opportunities to sharpen her practice and is willing to listen to others' ideas to best reach her students. She teaches robotics after school and volunteers to be in charge of the medication for field trips, taking the classes to be certified. She was, has such a calm and even voice, even voice with the students, no matter what the situation is, and keeps them calm. She really loves her students. Heather is a great part of the Hughcrest team, and her crystal apple reads, always calm, understanding, and a generous giver of her time. Congratulations, Heather. And the Hugh, yeah, the Hughcrest staff, you may want to stay. And now we have Instructional Assistant, Tanya Lyons. Tanya is in this job for all the right reasons. She connects with students, truly taking the time to understand where the student is struggling and has a deep desire to help them succeed. Tanya does not judge others and values the positive aspects of each person. Tanya is caring, compassionate, and kind. Tanya gives her all and believes every student can succeed and puts every piece of her energy and being into ensuring every child feels valued. Hughcrest is blessed to have Tanya be part of the team, and her crystal apple reads, kind, compassionate, and giver of the best hugs. Congratulations, Tanya. And next, from the Department of Teaching and Learning, we have Carla Addington. She's the English Language Development Teacher. Okay, who wants to hold Carla's award? Carla has served our district with an outstanding dedication to students for 11 years. She serves elementary students across multiple schools and is a fierce advocate for their success. She has a wealth of knowledge about teaching and English language learners and is passionate about her EL students and families, wanting nothing but the best for them. Her impact was especially evident last year as English learners showed remarkable growth in both academic and language skills. Carla's work extends beyond working with students. She has mentored new ELD teachers, supported families, helped align curriculum, and guided general education teachers in effective inclusive strategies. Her instruction with students is welcoming and focused on growth, and her support for students is tireless. Carla is tenacious, professional, and unwavering in her belief that all students can succeed. She leads with heart and purpose, and our district is stronger because of her dedication. Her crystal apple reads, guiding growth, inspiring hope, changing futures. Congratulations, Carla. And now from Department of Student Services, we have Lina Knowles, Teacher on Special Education Assignment. Lina serves as a TOSA, supporting special education needs for the district. She is one of the most conscientious, hardworking professionals around. She continuously gives her full effort and works tirelessly to ensure that students are supported, staff are assisted, and the various jobs she encounters are completed on time and with care. Lina takes on challenges with the best intent and with a mindset to develop a workable solution. She is not afraid to research, and she is skilled at thinking outside the box when presented with issues that have limitations. Lina is a team player who has high expectations. She will often develop ways to make processes work more efficiently and that are accessible for colleagues to utilize. She loves technology and is skillful in adapting, adapting to new advances. When it comes to hard work and putting in the extra mile, Lina comes second to no other. She is a truly a skilled and determined diamond in the rough, and her apple is a quote from Zig Ziglar that says, "There are no traffic jams on the extra mile." Congratulations, Lina. Could we have all award winners come up for a photo with the board, please? So if you've won an award, student or teacher, staff, would you please come up for one more photograph? At this time, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank Director Andrew Shirkcliff for his dedicated service to Roseburg Schools since 2021.
On the other side of the table?
Yeah, yeah. Like everybody else. This is your time to shine. Like many in our community, Andrew stepped forward at a time of uncertainty motivated by a desire to support and strengthen our public schools. And the years since, he has become a true champion for students, families, and staff. His decision to enroll his own children in our schools is a powerful vote of confidence in the work happening every day in classrooms across the district. As a local business owner, Andrew brought a valuable, no-nonsense perspective to the board, offering practical insight, a collaborative spirit, and steady leadership. His contributions were especially meaningful during the creation of our district's strategic plan, which will continue to guide and influence our path forward. Andrew, we will miss your thoughtful presence at the table. On behalf of the board and our entire community, we thank you for the care, time, and dedication you gave in service of our community's children. Now, first we have to open it up.
The Chevron gift card. Very thoughtful.
I'm sure it's idea. But we also have Board of Education, Roseburg Public Schools, 21 to through 25, Andrew Shirkcliff, in honor of inspirational leadership and faithful commitment to children.
Thank you.
Oh. Now, at this time, I would like to hand the podium over to Vice Chair Cotton.
Well, I have the pleasure this evening to recognize a tireless worker of this district that's been with us about 17 years. And this is our Director of Finance and Operations, Cheryl Northam. Would you please come up, please?
Is it right?
I didn't do a recap because I could talk all night, but I do want to say some things from the heart. Number one, Cheryl is an angel. Cheryl is an angel to many of our kids in this district. She has done so much behind the scenes, and we know that, and we want to thank you for that. Cheryl has also left her marks all over this district. You can go to Winchester Elementary. It was her idea, I believe, the little wolf prints that are in the sidewalk. Her and Jay both worked tirelessly to get the softball complex completed. I want to say on time and under budget, or over budget, but I'm not sure under budget. But they were awesome. And her little touch of the neat little water fountains there that have the water fountain for the dogs in the bottom, if you've noticed. She has helped bring in millions of dollars into this district through seismic grant projects. She has helped bring in, such is what Hughcrest is getting, a new walk-in freezer. You may not think that's really important, but they don't have one here. And they're going to have, it's in now, it'll be working next school year. It's right up their kitchen. She's just worked so tirelessly. And I think the most important thing from the business side of things, her audits have always been clean. And I live with a retired business manager, and they're quite different in the aspect that even a penny makes a difference. You better make things rebalance. And as directors, for all the years that I've been on the board, we've never had to worry about our finances. She's spot on, and we're going to miss her. But one thing about Cheryl, she is a wonderful teacher, and I know Danielle is going to be great, and Cheryl's not that far away. I wouldn't be surprised to see her working here or there. But we've just, we have just been so blessed to have you. And I know this is difficult for you to be standing up here, as it is for me too at times, but you need to be recognized. You've done a great job, and I would, I'd like You've done a great job, and I would, I'd like to call you a personal friend. So, thank you so much. We do have a It says, "Shir Northam, 2008-2025, in honor of fantastic service you're in skills," and I am having a hard time reading it, "skills dogged, determination and depth of integrity will long be remembered." So this is for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Cheryl. And now, for the last time this school year, we again welcome our RHS Student Leadership Representatives to hear updates on all the latest happenings at the high school. Tonight, our Student Leadership Representatives are Olivia Shirkcliff and Ryan Wilson. Please give them a warm welcome.
Thank you for hosting us. It's always a pleasure to be here. To begin, we had so much fun putting on the Homegoing Assembly last Friday, from staff and student goodbyes to a full-on basketball game. Gathering with the entire student body for the last time was an incredible way to cap off the year.
Our staff would love to let the entire community know that they defeated the class of 2025 in last Tuesday's volleyball game. Volleyball is essentially boys' volleyball, and they're totally bragging about it.
In addition to the assembly and volleyball, we had lots of fun seeing students participate in the dress-up days and lunchtime activities to cap off the year.
Today was the last regular school day for the class of 2025. Senior sunset will be starting in about an hour, thanks to the hard work of our peers and an incredible amount of support from RHS parents. A few Sundays ago, our leadership team had the pleasure of welcoming over two hundred graduating seniors and their loved ones to a brunch that was catered by RHS students.
I am super excited to share that earlier this month, my peers and staff members elected me as ASP president. I'm super excited to work alongside our new vice presidents. Thank you. I'm super excited to work alongside our new vice and the elected grade-level representatives, Adi Renaud for seniors, Sayad Mahrez for juniors, and Anna Karan for sophomores.
Our track team qualified eleven athletes to the state meet at Hayward Field, which happened this weekend. This is the most competitors the program has sent to state in over twelve years. A special highlight includes the boys' four-by-four hundred relay who set a facility record at North Med during their district meet.
Maria, too, just that same relay team just broke the school record at Roseburg High School, too. So it's been an awesome thing. Additionally, our softball team has been killing it. At the time we wrote this, which was about a week ago, they were heading to their third round of playoffs against Jesuit High School, and everyone on campus is so proud of the team.
In addition to being Southwest Conference champions, our baseball team competed in two rounds of playoff games and is sending a large number of graduating seniors to participate in collegiate athletics.
Major Castellano Silvestri, who placed third in the state golf tournament, and Zachary Williams, who represented the men's golf program at state.
Our sports teams are looking forward to summer competitions. In between preparing for All-Star, All-Star Leagues to national competitions, they are gathering one last time for banquets to honor the incredible seasons they had.
Now, on behalf of the hundreds of RHS students who completed this month, month, excuse me, we are so happy to announce that AP tests are finally done.
APs are done, but final start this Friday, and will run from Monday and stay next week.
Additionally, ten RHS students completed their CNA, which I believe is Certified Nursing Assistant Course, and vacations after over eighty hours of clinicals at Mercy and a ton of studying.
Further, many of our peers are now certified phlebotomists, thanks to the UCC and RHS connection.
Graduation is also this Saturday. We are looking forward to hearing from the class of 2025's commencement speaker, Zachary Williams, and the adored Mrs. Rachel Jackson, who will give a goodbye message to the class. She is also retiring this year. We're gonna miss her a ton.
Speaking of awesome things seniors are doing, Grace Harris is headed to University of Oregon as a stamp scholar. This scholarship provides full tuition, fees, and housing for four years, and will link her to a network of scholars across the country.
And finally, the largest RHS yearbook ever is all across the campus, highlighting the timeless aspect of the RHS experience. Thank you much, thank you very much for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Ryan and Olivia. And we'll see you next year, Ryan. But Olivia, we still are gonna miss you as you go to a different school district. But thank you so much. Give them a round of applause. They did a great job. At this time, we're gonna take just a short break, and we're gonna let these students get back to their busy, busy, busy lives and give you a chance to regroup. And then we'll come back and we'll have some public participation. If you haven't yet filled out a card, please so do, please do so now in the back. Thank you. You may want to kind of migrate back to your seat, please. Hey, at this time, we will be having public participation. There are just a few things I need to note. Number one, you have two minutes, and we do guard that time carefully. And the other thing is due to legalities, you are not able to mention any students' names or any specific teacher or staff names as well. That's not, not allowed. I do want to remind people that during public participation, the board does not ask questions, so it's not a dialogue. We just listen, you know, and any kind of, if you run out of time, you can still email us with the rest of your presentation so that, you know, we can be in the loop of things because we want to hear what you have to say. So at this time, Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie, looking into the sun, you're glowing, will announce our first participant.
Okay, first participant is Destiny King. Please make sure to turn the microphone on, and when the timer goes off, please wrap up your statements, please. Thank you.
So this is gonna be a little hard because I do have names in here. So I'm gonna try to skip over the names, so I hope that you guys can get my point based on that. Hello, everyone. My name is Destiny King, and I'm the parent of a second second grader who has recently moved out of a class at Winchester Elementary. I am here tonight because I have to ask, why did this happen to my child? She used to love school. She was excited to learn, excited to see her friends, but this year started coming home in tears with daily stomach aches and panic about going to class. She became withdrawn, anxious, and stopped believing in herself. She stopped raising her hand and lost all confidence. As a parent, this has been devastating to watch. I did everything that I could. I reached out in January and again in February. I asked for help gently at first, but every time my concerns were brushed off or blamed on peer drama, or the class is just struggling as a whole. I never got to speak to anyone directly. Sorry, I'm trying not to say names. Really sorry. Every single concern was routed through the teacher I was worried about, and nothing changed. I eventually escalated my concerns to the superintendent's office. I sent emails, but I never received any sort of response. I did get a response from the principal, and thankfully, my daughter was moved to a new class. But let's be honest, this is not escalation. This is a loop. And I'm left wondering if the district understands how serious this has been. I'm a public figure, and I've built a platform on, around standing up for people and teaching others to be unapologetically themselves. And yet, in this case, I tried to do things the right way privately, respectfully, through the proper channels, without taking anything public. The silence from leadership has made it clear that louder advocacy was needed. This is not about one bad day or an argument between kids. This is about months of emotional neglect in a classroom. I spoke with another parent who had also requested that her child not be placed in this specific classroom due to emotional harm this person had caused three years ago to her older son. This conversation confirmed that my daughter's experience was a larger pattern of ongoing issues for years. I'm incredibly thankful that my daughter finally has a teacher who sees her, advocates for her, and makes her feel safe. She is thriving and has been in class for, been in this new class for two weeks. But let's be honest, it should not have taken months of distress and my daughter's emotional well-being crumbling in front of us for this to happen. Every child deserves this kind of care and attention from the start. I'm formally requesting that you retire this teacher, effective before the next school year. Every day she remains in the classroom is another day our children's risk emotional harm. Our kids deserve that, our kids deserve classrooms that build them up, not ones that break them down. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you. And our next participant?
Brian Wilson.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Wilson from Roseburg High School, and I would like to talk about the RHS parking reform for next year. I do not think that this reform is a horribly catastrophic issue, but it is one I have heard complaints about and have also heard no positive comments about. Having spoken with my peers, three main concerns have come up from this system. One, it will turn the parking lot into a free-for-all. Two, seniors without a first or second period will be disadvantaged. And three, parking spaces reserved for students will still be stolen. Sorry, I should add some context. The current parking system is that seniors and juniors who have a driver's license and meet other certain qualifications can get a designated parking spot. I believe that the, how you get a parking spot will still be the same, except that there will be no designated spots. It's just that you will get a sticker, and then you can park anywhere that is allowed for students, and they will fill that up until there are no spaces left. So although I personally disagree that this will result in a free-for-all, I do believe this disadvantages seniors without first or second periods. And once you become a senior at Roseburg High School, you have the option to, if you meet the graduation requirements, not have a first or second period. As you will have to park on the farthest edges of campus because they will arrive later. Furthermore, students without a parking pass hypothetically would still be able to steal the reserved spots. There may also be confusion as to where these available student spots are, as the markings for parking spaces at the high school are not very visible. And there are also certain lots that are meshed with student and teacher parking as well. Overall, I have heard no systematic complaints with the current parking system from my peers. The only complaints have been about things that are outside of school control, like, "Oh, someone stole my parking spot," or, "Oh, I didn't manage to get a spot this year." I believe this new change would unfairly stress seniors with different personal situations, as some seniors may need to work in the mornings to support their family financially, and some just want to sleep in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we don't, I do want to say just a couple of things. First of all, the board has approved purchase of a property that will provide more parking places. So what I'd like to do is direct our superintendent to work with our operations team and also with RHS to move forward with additional parking as planned and working with your principal to get these other, other issues resolved. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mike Schofield.
Chairman Minor, board members and administrative staff. I'm here tonight, and I'm as a person, and also I had the privilege of serving as a chairman of the of the Budget Committee this year as we accepted the proposed budget and reviewed it. We had some lively discussion, and Superintendent Corden started with the bad news. And that was, we are about six million under, short of what we normally would have in a current year budget as we compared to last year. He ended with bad, or good news. That was the bad news. He ended with good news, saying that there were no staff layoffs as a result. They were able to make some adjustments. And through some employee attrition, there was no one suffered a layoff as a result. The revenue was extremely interesting as we watched the sources give us various estimates, which changed. And some, we had no estimates at all. And so we have a budget with a lot of uncertainty. And fortunately, there's budget law that allows for a supplemental budget that we can amend the budget if necessary during the year. Danielle Littlefield gave us a budget presentation, did a wonderful job with slides, and for a visual learner like me, that was a big help. There were committee members that asked for additional time, and we did start the second meeting with Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie reviewing the special revenue funds. And again, thank you, Michelle, for that presentation. It was very well done and very helpful to me. Cheryl Northam then highlighted the major funds for us and talked about what had been accomplished the last year and coming projects for the next year. I have to stop here and tell you that I have known Cheryl for a long, long time. We have worked as peers, as fiscal officers in various school districts and various locations in Oregon. Cheryl, as you know her, may appear quiet. Well, let me tell you, she's bright and quiet. And if you get here in a small meeting setting, she is extremely fun to be with. And I promise you a good time. And if you don't believe me, ask the staff. Your strategic plan, the first item as you roll around on the right is the operations. And I feel privileged to just take one little sliver of that plan in helping to approve the proposed budget. And I do want to tell you that we had a unanimous approval for the budget, which speaks well of the work that you do and the organization that you do as we try to make a difference for kids at the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schofield. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you and all of the budget committee for all their time and their efforts spent on wrangling with these numbers and especially during this present economy. So we thank you for your service. Thank you. Now, we have Superintendent, his review of the agenda and communications to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank people for coming. Thank you for sharing. Appreciate that. Want to connect with you if you'd rate at some point. I also want to thank the Hughcrest staff. Great, just beautiful. You turned this beautiful space into an extremely beautiful space. But there's, there's something about children's artwork that is some of the most beautiful artwork in the world. I've had the privilege of being in some great spaces where there's great art with great artists like Picasso and Monet. I don't think they rival kids' work. Love being in this space. So thank you for the warm welcome and to your staff. Since this publication, we have added three additional hires to the consent agenda. Katie Bowers, a learning specialist, a learning specialist at Eastwood. James Stever, who's going to serve as a DLC teacher at Hughcrest. And Eric Freeman, principal at Melrose Elementary School. In terms of communication, want to make sure you know that Director Krimmets is aware of the meeting and she has had a prior family commitment. And so she is excused tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the consent agenda, item number one, pages one through forty-six in your packet. We have the normal things that are usually in there, minutes and such. We do have gifts to the district. I do want to say a special thank you to Rebecca Hilstrom-Wilson and S.B. James Construction for their generous donations to the school district. And then at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is, are, is there any discussion? Great. All in favor? A bigger one? Yeah.
I second.
Andrew second. Okay. And, okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll get with it here. Okay, item number two, we have resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fourteen, authorizing budget appropriation transfers for 2024, 2025. Again, I would like to pass this to Cheryl. She wants to put her insight on this resolution. That would be great.
The board has the authority to move appropriations. It's on. Yeah. Should I yell? Sorry. The board has the authority to move appropriation from function to function and within funds. And this year, with the purchase of two homes, we were in excess of the four thousand function within a fund. So this just moves the spending authority from where the four thousands were in the four hundred funds to the two hundred funds where the purchases were made.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty, resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fourteen.
I will motion to approve resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fourteen.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Oh. Okay. All opposed?
No, I'm just in favor.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Let's see. Got to make sure I'm on the right one here. Okay, that was item number three. Twenty, this is resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fifteen. This is adopting the twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six budget, making appropriations and levying ad valorem taxes. This was in page, pages forty-eight through thirty, forty-nine. And again, we'll ask Cheryl her take on this, please.
Back in nineteen ninety-three, I interviewed for the business manager position at Winston-Dillard School District. And one of my interview questions was, what is the three actions that the board takes, you know, after the budget hearing? This is what that, what is? And Mr. Schofield is the one that asked me that question in my interview. So I just thought I'd add that. So this sums up the work of the budget committee and does the functions legally required.
More, any questions of Cheryl? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fifteen, adopting the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six budgeting, making appropriations and levying ad valorem taxes.
I move to approve resolution twenty-four, twenty-five, fifteen, adopting the budget. And would say thank you to Mike, Mr. Schofield, because prior to you being in that role, I was there for multiple years. And I also sat out there for multiple years. So thank you for your time. And this is a sound budget. I'm really pleased with the work that everyone did on it.
So we will slowly second that motion.
Thank you, Director Hammerson. So any discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor? Great, motion carries. We have some committee reports, curriculum and instruction. Would like to hear from Dr. Jill Weber, please.
I'm excited to share some of the work that has been happening in our teaching and learning department and share the report from our last committee meeting, which will lead into the next couple of actions that we're going to take. So we had a great committee meeting and Mr. Hammerson, Mr. Leoni and Mrs. Miner were there and we had great discussions at that meeting. So starting out, I want to first thank Mindy Endicott and Ben Bentia for their leadership through this adoption process. They are, they took this on and understood the importance of it and led us through a very thorough process. So I want to thank them. I also want to thank the teachers who did the piloting, who took extra time and effort on their part to try out curriculum and see how it was working. And the principals and their buildings, because every building piloted, and the principals in the building for supporting that. And I also want to thank the students because they gave us some good feedback that I'll share a little bit later as well. So as we get started, as always, we keep the strategic plan in front of us. Choosing curriculum helps us achieve that goal in the center of ensuring that all of our students receive that care, support and instruction needed. We also, in our focus areas, of course, reading is one of those focus areas which we'll talk about today. And then as you move down grade level standards, we're an important part of choosing a curriculum as well as a reading and writing every day. And we wanted that part of our curriculum and that assessment for learning needs to be built in so teachers can use that information to adjust instruction to meet our students. So it does drive what we do in a big way. Next slide, please. So this is the process that Mrs. Endicott led us through. We looked at the, we'll look at the review of the process. We'll talk a little bit about the teacher and student feedback and then provide a recommendation and share a little bit about how our plan is for implementing this. So the process actually began over a year ago. And in September of twenty-three, the learning began. And that's where we focused on the early literacy framework that the state released to help us understand the foundations of how students learn to read. That had to be a big part of the work that we did and that grounded us in choosing the right curriculum. Then in the winter and spring of twenty-four, we wrote a position paper. And many of you know that have been involved in curriculum adoptions. That's the foundation that starts our work is this position paper. It is written with teachers giving feedback. It's administrators being part of that. And that guides how we look at this program, how we look at the curriculum, how we look at instruction within that classroom. So we did write an early literacy position paper and that was centered to helping us select the right program. Then in the fall and winter, we started gathering some information. We looked at ODE's list of K-five curriculum that was approved. We also started looking at some research. One of the things we used was the Reading Leagues, which is a nonprofit, non-biased review of curriculum. So we used that to help guide. In the beginning, we knew that ODE gave us a list of seven to choose from and that was way too many. We needed to narrow it down. So looking at our position paper, getting feedback and what we knew was important in our district, we were able to narrow it down to two. And then February through May, we've gone through a very rigorous process of piloting the materials. We chose to pilot two, which were the Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts and the McGraw-Hill Wonders, which is our current adoption. That's a twenty eighteen and this was a newer adoption, which was updated and ensured that aligned with the science of reading. Next slide. So teachers, when we looked at the feedback teachers gave us, which there was a form and every teacher gave feedback, the words that came out when we were looking at Core Knowledge Language Arts were high engagement, deeper learning, stronger outcomes, ease of use, rigor, relevance, a positive shift and clear preference. So that was the feedback that came from Core Knowledge Language Arts. When we looked at Wonders, it was a little bit different. So the reading, writing companion work text was a bit, was, was there. It was a little disjointed and confusing structure. There's a lot for them to choose from. Differentiation potential was there. They saw weak writing and phonics instruction, which is super important when we're looking at readers and writers. Some effective routines and flexibility, the word some made a little more concerning and that we also saw low student engagement. So from that, you might begin to determine what we were thinking that we might want to choose. Next slide. So when the teachers gave feedback about which one that they had a preference on, Core Knowledge Language Arts was one hundred percent selected by the twenty-four teachers who gave feedback. And that is a resounding yes, this is the one that we want. But not only did we hear that from the teachers, students also provided some feedback. So you can see the one in the middle was written that says, which one are you going to choose? And they wrote CKLA, Core Knowledge Language Arts. You can see the yes with the smiley face and the no with the sad face. And so clearly the students knew what they wanted. Also, on, it's hard to see on these slides, but the students wrote a summary of what they learned. They enjoy the learning around, these two talked about animals. We love the learning about animals. They gave specific things about the type of catfish that would swallow eggs and store them in your mouth and you thought that they were eating them, but they actually, that's how they incubated them. The way they're learning about important things that they really love was what was said in these papers. So there's a lot of papers that were sent that, that gave us some information about what the students thought. There's a few others that also were sent and so next slide. And this was written to me from, was a Hughcrest teacher who sent these. And again, saying, this is the one I really want. This is the paper, this is the, the paper said, this is a curriculum that I think every kid should have. I'm hoping we get more opportunities to learn from this. Every one of them was saying, please choose this one. And so that was easy for us between the teachers and the student feedback. Our recommendation, next slide, would be for you to, as a board, adopt officially Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts and the third edition for our K-five ELA curriculum. So we'll look at that a bit later.
So in your history of going through this process and adopting curriculum, have you ever had a response, an overwhelming response like this in the past?
I have not seen that in my time working in curriculum that is that. There's usually a, you know, we'll see a preference one way or the other. I've had it split down the middle fifty-fifty when I've worked on this, but I have not ever experienced a hundred percent agreement on a program. I don't know, Michelle, have you, Michelle hasn't?
Have you ever had students write letters concerning curriculum?
Not ever seen that. And hearing from the principals about the, and the teachers, the difference in engagement in the students when they moved from the Core Knowledge Language Arts to the Wonders, the kids were kind of mad. They're like, I'm not sure, I, why aren't we going back to that one? I like that one better. We saw behavior shifts in student. This curriculum is very, very engaging. There's every fifteen minutes or so, they're moving, they're partnering, they're writing, they're reading, just this thing, a lot of different activities within that. They're not just sitting and reading. So that was exciting. The feedback from the teachers when they first saw this curriculum, they were, I don't know if our kids can do this. Looks really hard. There's a lot here. The kids did it. We also heard about how all students had access to it. So one thing that we believe deeply in is that all students are in core and some need extra help. So they may go to a classroom where they receive some services for additional reading support. But we want every kid in the classroom together reading and every kid had access to that. And they blew us out of the water at the skills our students have. And the data showed growth just within a few weeks we did this. We use this curriculum. So we are so excited about the possibility of bringing this next year and what achievement we can see from this program.
Thank you, Dr. Webber. Given that information, I would entertain a motion to approve of Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, CKLA, as our English Language Arts curriculum. Adoption is proposed by the pilot teachers and the TNL team. Do I have a motion?
I will motion to adopt the ELA curriculum. If that's good enough, or do I need to say more?
I second.
Okay.
Okay, this is the Amplify Core Knowledge. Okay.
Correct.
Great. Any additional discussion?
Oh, you go first.
So how many other districts in the, do, let me back up. So how many can, do we have a breakdown of the other school districts in the state? Who's doing what, using what and who's using?
We were, Mrs. Endicott reached out to several different school districts to find out who were using it and what their feedback was because we wanted to get that real feedback. And we were able to connect with several across the state. And she was able to talk with administrators, directors of teaching and learning as well as teachers. And even some teachers that we knew through other channels, we were able to talk to, which gave us a real, real feedback, real honest feedback about what, what teachers thought. And we also work with Oregon RTI and this is a program that's used by several school districts that are using Oregon RTI as well. So this is a program that's more and more being adopted by a lot of districts for the same reasons I think that we're seeing.
Doesn't really answer my question, but.
Okay, so is there a list, like?
No, I just, I mean, I'm going to vote yes for it, but I'm just curious since it's so overwhelming support. You know, how, I guess the better question would be, how many, how many approved curriculums were there at the state?
There, oh, I got that. Okay.
No, but that's, I changed my question.
Okay, good.
And how many there were?
Yeah.
And, and then if this one is so good, it'd be great. It'd be curious, I would be curious.
There were seven that were on the list that OD gave us that met their criteria for early literacy. And from that and looking at our position paper, we narrowed it down to five. There were two that did not fit that we thought at all. And those five we were able to bring to our English Language Arts team and go through a rigorous rubric process where they looked at the curriculum, they dug into them. It matched or didn't match. And then collectively, we narrowed that down to three. And then we even further narrowed that down to two. And so the process wasn't just, let's, you know, choose some. It was a very rigorous process of narrowing that down to the two we tried.
Yeah.
So seven is what was there.
I think the state adds, anyway, I'll keep the political crap out.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I haven't been to many committee meetings where there was so much excitement. But Mendy, Ben, Jill, Tim, just seeing, I could see the kids lit up like a Christmas tree through your guys' eyes through the committee meeting. And it was really, it was awesome. And I'll thank Director Leoni and Director Krimmets for, you know, asking questions that were very, very helpful during the committee meeting. But it was a great committee meeting. Like I said, I haven't been to one like that, but all you guys, your, your eyes are lighting up like, this is going to propel these kids in a great direction. So I just want to thank all you guys. That was, I didn't think a committee meeting could be that inspiring.
So we do have a motion on the table and I just want to clarify this, Dr., Ms. Director Hammerson, that this is to approve Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts as our English Language Arts curriculum adoption is proposed by the pilot teacher and the TNL team. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
All in favor? Great, all opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now if.
Can I, can I share the health one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where we're going.
Okay, good. So additionally, this year, when we look at the cycle for ODE, So additionally, this year, when we look at the cycle for O D E, the six twelve health is up for adoption. And so Mr. Bantia led them through a process of reviewing the curriculum, getting teacher and student feedback as well as recommendations. When we do a K five E L A adoption, it involves every elementary school and every teacher in some way. And so we're, the process of rolling out new curriculum for an elementary reading is big. When we're looking at six twelve health, there's fewer teachers. And so this process, it feels a little different, but it's still as important, even though there's fewer teachers involved in it. So next slide, please. So similarly, Mr. Bantia met with the secondary health teachers, start in October of twenty twenty-four. This, they co-created also a position paper, which is just what we've talked about with our other adoption processes and guiding our work. And the committee was able to see what that position paper was and how we believe health education should be taught and students learning in our district. After that, in November, the state came out with their list of approved curriculum. Where we had seven programs in elementary reading, we had three for middle school that were approved by O D E and one at the high school. We requested samples then from all of those publishers, so we could take a look at them before we were selecting which ones we wanted to pilot. Next slide, please. We also requested, requested digital access because much of the curriculum is digital now. And so that technical part of it, we wanted to experience as well. And we coordinated that integration with Miss, with Katie, who helps us in our district. And then we scheduled some training with Goodheart Wilcox and with Human Kinetics, which are the two that we were looking at. Then the physical materials were also delivered, and so Ben coordinated all of that, getting those textbooks to Jolene, Fremont, and R H S, and then also getting that digital access. And then there was some training that occurred in February. And then we piloted somewhere in between February and April. The reason it's a little broad is because we tried to choose a unit that aligns with a unit that they're currently teaching, so that the students are still staying in sequence of their standards and learning. And then we also, and we did the same, I should have said this with the E L A, is that we did have a community review. It was open for a full week, and then we had one evening. And so it was May fifth through ninth is when we had that. Next slide. The, the high school piloted the one program that O D E approved. We did want to go through the process of piloting the one to see if it was the one that we wanted. We knew piloting one felt strange. I'll just be honest about that. It wasn't enough for us to narrow it down to select one we wanted, but we also didn't want to stop the process if it was one that was amazing and is what we needed. So we went through the process. The feedback we got from the high school on the one that we piloted was that the material, they were functional, they worked, they're comparable to currently what we're doing. That the, in, the digital integration, we didn't decide not to test that. We just looked at the, the hard copy of the books. And the preference they had after doing that was remain with the one that they currently had. They, it felt very similar, and in their words, it didn't make sense to spend money on a new curriculum. It felt very similar to the one that they're currently teaching. So they were hoping, they understand we need to stay up to date, and we want curriculum up to date. But we also want to choose a curriculum that makes us better, that gets more for our students, that helps us teach better. And so we kind of sat on that for a while, trying to figure out what we were going to do. So I'll come back to that in a second. The middle school did have two that they piloted. They tried Human Kinetics and Goodheart Wilcox. They went through the process of all of those. And their feedback was neutral around student enthusiasm. They were participating very similarly in the two programs. That there wasn't any really barriers to that, but they did have a strong preference for the Goodheart Wilcox. And they feel that aligns better with their current practices, the way they teach, and the way that they're exposing students to this content. It matches that. That they felt like it was clear, the digital part of it was accessible, and that they had the materials such as slides that, that they were currently using and made sense in the way that they taught. They feel very smooth about that instructional experience. So they, that's the one that they selected a preference for over the other. Next slide. So they're recommending that the middle school that they would like to adopt the Goodheart Wilcox, which is a health curriculum. It is a current program that the high school has been using the same company, I'll say. And they would like to adopt that. The middle school is not the one that they're currently using. And the high school is, and I'm going to recommend, and Ben would say the same, and the high school teachers would say the same, that we hold off a year. We're hearing some news that O D E may be saying, we're not the only one saying one program. Maybe we need to have a few more to look at. So they, we're hearing that they may be going back to the table to bring out some other programs. And we want the best. We want more. We want something that's going to help our students achieve and learn and teachers instruct better. So we would like to wait a year with your permission and look at next year if O D E comes out with another list and see what we could choose there. For the middle school, we'd like to recommend that we adopt the Goodheart Wilcox Comprehensive Health Skills for Middle School.
Thank you. Any questions? At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Goodheart Wilcox Comprehensive Health Skills Middle School Health Curriculum Adoption, as proposed by the pilot teachers and the T N L team.
I'll motion to approve the middle high, middle school health curriculum.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, we have a first and a second. Is there any added discussion?
I'm a little concerned. I must have read it similar. I'm a little concerned, just, uh, process. I don't recall seeing, or, or the last motion that we passed on the K through five on the dollar now. I don't think it's wise to be, and I should have caught this, approving motions without some type of a dollar amount. And then, so I don't know what.
I think policy states that that we don't bring the dollar amount.
That's fine, but I think.
You'd like to see.
I think it should, is always, it should be in there, so.
I absolutely can share the quotes that we've gotten around.
I don't, I just don't think it's good business to approve at large expense without knowing a ballpark figure. So that's just me, but I think you should do that. And then editorialize just for a second. I was talking, you know, you're talking about you had seven that you had, were able to choose from on the K through five. And my, I think my, my comment was made or was enforced that the state only has one for high school help. To me, that's just really lousy.
And we didn't feel good about that either.
And I, I really appreciate, but I think we should have some type of dollar amount, and it may be in here, and I just didn't see it. And it is, I apologize.
Um, it's, it's a question, really, and I think I might have asked this already, but waiting on the high school curriculum, you know, for more vendors to be available. Is that, I mean, is the state gonna have a problem with that?
So there is a process that we will need to be able to state how we're going to ensure we meet the new health standards. And so we'll have to be able to tell the state, this is the one we're choosing, and here's how we're going to meet all of those standards. And so I'll go through that process of doing that, once we decide and approve that for the high school.
Now, do you know of any other school districts that are having the same feelings about this?
Almost every other school district that is looking at adopting high school health materials, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We do have a motion on the table and a second. All in favor of adopting the Goodheart Wilcox? Okay, motion carries. Um, now, on page fifty, we have Assistant Superintendent Michelle Neese memorandum concerning the purchase of Chromebooks, along with a quote from C T L Corporation on page fifty-one. You're being asked to approve the purchase of five hundred Chromebooks to support student engagement and participation in upcoming summer learning programs and to enhance our overall digital, digital learning infrastructure at a proposed purchase price of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. The good news, funding for this purchase is provided through the Summer Learning Grant. So I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the five hundred Chromebooks from C T L Corporation in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I still move.
Is there a second?
I.
I'll second it, but I was, I'm amazed that on a financial purchase, I was kind of ribbon, Andrew, because I'm like, he's not gonna do this motion, but yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
I do have one discussion thing. Okay, I'll, I'll be real quick. And this is kind of a little, little off the wall. But there's like a viral TikTok trend or social media trend right now of students putting lead pencils into these Chromebooks, and then it just fries the thing. So I, I would just, the thing explodes or something, I don't know. I would, I just want to put that out there, so I have it on record that we're paying attention, so hopefully these Chromebooks will be looked after. That's all I got.
I'll ask about that one. Okay, so if I, what, what do we do with these after, after summer school? I mean, do they get incorporated?
Yes, they will be incorporated into the devices we have for the district.
Pencils don't happen.
Just since Steve made a comment, I figured I'd talk about it a little bit. For the record, I believe the only purchase that I really approved of and made a comment about was the Chromebooks last year, because the price point on these things is amazing that we get. It's the first piece of equipment, anything that the school has bought, I'm like, we got a deal. So I just checked, it's three sixty a Chromebook here, and I believe they were like, they were less than that. I mean, obviously it goes up year for year. Do you remember Cheryl or Michelle, how much they were last year? They were three twenty or two ninety-nine? They're close to three sixty, okay. I just remember literally the only item in four years that was reasonably priced was these Chromebooks, so good job again.
Well, it's even a better deal because it's being paid for through the Summer Learning Grant, so it's actually costing us zero dollars. So we have a first, a second, we've had lively discretion. How about a vote, all in favor of purchasing the Chromebooks? Okay, did you vote? I didn't see your hand. You.
Yes.
Do you want, oh, okay, yes, motion carries.
You're picking on.
Oh, boy. Okay, uh, we need to approve a, a updated long-range facilities report, and you have received copies of this previously. A few months ago, Director Cubic had attempted, or excuse me, accepted the task of auditing the long-range facilities report that had been presented by Susan Miller of the Wool, Wool Perk, Wool Perk Group. And now you're being asked for approval of this work, which now better reflects the direction of our board and district. So I would entertain a motion to approve the updated long-range facilities report, initially approved December eleventh of twenty twenty-four, and subsequently updated by Director Keith Cubic. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I thought Keith was gonna do it. I will motion to approve the updated long-range facilities report.
Is there a second?
Second, Ted.
All right.
Great. Do we have any discussion? I will say that I appreciated the red line addition that made it so much easier. And I think that the, the edits that Keith made were, were good and acceptable and sound, so. Any other discussion? Great, so all in favor of accepting this long-range report? Great, unanimous, motion carries. Thank you, Keith, for dedicating the time needed to properly review all of this information and to really reflect our community and our school district. Thank you. We appreciate your efforts. Now we have superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to share a couple of things with you this evening. Relative to Vice Chair Cotton, your question about the purchase of the E L A curriculum, we'll get you, we'll get the board that information, but it was around approximately about a million dollars for a seven-year quicker adoption and for E L A. And I believe both vendors were right around the same price as well, but we'll get that to the board, so thank you for that. Every time I get a chance to talk about our school district, I want to talk about our kids and how great they are. We've got amazing staff that work with kids. And I so appreciate the board, and, and so I want to give you a quick highlight. Kids, as you heard from our leadership kids, our students, they're, um, they're up to, they're doing a lot of great things, and they're busy. I have one of those in my own home and know that they keep a, a pretty rigorous pace. But they're doing lots of good things. I want to share, share with you just a snapshot of a couple of things our kids have been up to in the last few weeks. In addition to kind of serving in the classroom and doing their work in the classroom, trying to move this thing on there, and it's gonna go. We've had our students take the lead in a decades-old tradition in Memorial Day, placing flags at the cemetery. Both approximate to the V A and on Harvard. Many of us have had a chance to kind of be there with the kids. It's a really tender time, actually, to see these kids show respect for those who have gone before them and have provided our ability to have schools and democracy and learn and choose our pathway forward in this country. So that's awesome. Some students at Eastwood were, you, I think have all been to Eastwood and seen the great connection to the tributary and estuary there, and they were releasing steelhead trout recently in Deer Creek, and they care for these awesome fish, and it's a thing there. It's pretty cool. And they're involved in that community work and also the learning that's involved with that. We've had kids inducted into National Honor Society at our middle schools and high school. And we've got a picture here of kids from R H S. It's an F A A skills competition at U C C that they've been involved in. So we've got great kids. Anytime I get a chance to talk to, to people in the community, I like to remind them, it's the best generation of kids I've ever seen. They're amazing, and they're, they're active, and they're doing great things in our community. We have a great group of seniors this year. Three hundred and eighty-one of them are planning to graduate on Saturday. Thank you to everyone who's been involved with that, parents, our own, our students, our community, our staff, our board. Uh, this is a really exciting time. This isn't just a high school event, although we put a lot of pressure on the high school to pull this event off. It's a community event, and it should be a celebration in our community for the many efforts that have gone into each one of these unique, amazing, special kids. I do love the fact that I feel completely confident that one of the, when students walk across the podium in our school district, they have a pathway to their future to be successful. We don't rubber stamp a diploma here. You have to earn it. And we have to earn it in our trust with our students and our parents. And we're excited and hope the community will join us this Saturday, eleven o'clock at Roseburg High School at Finley Field. The link's there for the live stream as well. All right, Andrew, we talked about you quite a bit. I'm gonna talk about you one more time here. Andrew did join us in two thousand twenty-one. Was kind of a unique time with COVID and masking and all sorts of different things, but just want to thank you for your service. For those of you who don't know, I mean, this, the service of our board is completely voluntary. The state actually allows board members now to get a stipend for their work. And our board has said collectively, we're not taking any money. This is a service position. And people probably have no idea the amount of time the board spends in committee meetings and preparation and debrief meetings and planning and reviewing documents and staying in the loop. It's hours and hours and hours per week. It's completely voluntary. It's on behalf of kids in the community. And, and thank you, Andrew, and thank our board for your service. It oftentimes goes unnoticed. And things just don't happen. It has to, it requires the governance of the board who directs the direction of the school district. So thank you to, to you for your service. Oftentimes, you have things come across your, your places, placemats as board members that are difficult decisions to make and complicated as we run the fourth largest organization in the county. And it's complex, and thank you for your steadiness, and we will miss you and wish you well. Let me talk about a few things real quick. This is a great time of the year for us to spend requisite time to understand the experience kids have had and the experience staffs having, and to look at data and to review and to think deeply about the systems we've created. Sometimes we, we get so locked into what we've done in the past that we don't sometimes have the fortitude to actually ask ourselves if what we're creating by design is the right, is the right design. And we use this, our strategic plan every day in our work. It's part, it's really become part of our D N A. It's how we, it's how we organize, it's what we hold ourselves accountable to, it's how we budget. It's how we um, it's how we organize, it's what we hold ourselves accountable to, it's how we budget. It's how we look on, are we getting an academic return on our investment? Is it, because it's really centered on students. Are kids receiving the care and support and the instruction they need? Are they on a path for graduation? And we all know this pretty well here, um, but we hold ourselves accountable to make sure staff's getting the things they need to be successful. That leaders are growing, that we're talking about effective operations and that kids are in a safe, inclusive environment. And so we've been asking ourselves these questions. Do our structures ensure high levels of learning for all of our students? Are we providing the most impactful opportunities for kids? Um, and we really want to hear, appreciate the comments tonight too, to have the courage to come talk to the board myself about that. We really hold ourselves accountable and say we want to do better. And we want to make sure that we're acknowledging the good work that's happening, but always looking for improvements. So I just want to let, you know, the board and community know we're continuing to look at this. I think there are things that we can do better at by design. I think there are things that are really working well, but we're, we are committed to finding improvement. And so um, with that strap plan as our guide, we're working toward that. On some different concepts or designs that I'll be bringing forward, um, as we kind of work through a couple of ideas. I wanted to share something too here with you tonight. Um, we are working on a shared vision for the future of our community. The schools play such a critical role in, in what a community can become. We have the privilege of, of having the community's most important assets with us. Our kids are the most important asset in the community. They just are. There's nothing more important in terms of the rising generation. I talk about this often. And we've been working with many partners and community members on this. We've reached out to parents, we've reached out to business um, owners. We've talked to our own staff and our own students about what we want in our future. And one thing that's, that we've been thinking about for a while is we really have a vision that is, is true to what we've been doing in many ways, but also is a little bit unique. As we think about our, our um, partnerships with industry and the college and our career pathways. And I think it's time that we start to um, think about a, a bit of a branding move. A bit of thinking about what we want to accomplish. Um, and so I wanted to share tonight some of the work we've, we're putting together. Um, we have had a traditional, and this may not seem important, people are like, this is what you're working on, but there's a plan for this. And we've kind of had a, this traditional R and this look in the past. Um, we are gonna, um, we have a new website that we are, we're switching vendors actually, it's a bit of a cost savings and efficiency for us as well. We're gonna move forward with a new logo from, um, from what you see on the top there to the bottom. And we're gonna be talking with the board and working on our current strap plan. And what we want to think about in our future, not this next year, but in the year previous. And so I want to share this with you, as we build your vision as a board and our vision as a community. Uh, we, we um, think this new um, focus on our mission and shared goals and community success will be good for us. And you can kind of see that there. It reflects a little bit of our, uh, the mountains and the river and our work together as that, as it relates to our, our connection with industry and our, and our parents as well. Yes, they can, we, the colors are available. We'll go there later. Okay. All right, let me give you one quick legislative. We've got um, twenty-five days or so left in this long session. It's the biennium session. It's a busy time in Salem. As you've probably, um, as you're, you're aware of, it's uh, the state every two years goes through a process of appropriation. Where there's sometimes winners and losers with how this works, where you, you get a two-year budget. It's been a very busy time in Salem. Legislators are writing lots of different bills. And um, there's been, it's been a, a busy time. I want to just update you on a few kind of legislative things that are happening. Um, the, the, on both sides of the chamber, um, on the Senate and the House, there is agreement to move forward with the governor's proposed budget of eleven point three six. They've said eleven point three six, eleven four. I think the rounding, those are different numbers, by the way. Uh, so eleven hun, eleven point three six dollar state school fund budget. Um, that is a jump from last year's budget. Um, but all of us, just like our, our districts, no different in some ways than home, where we've seen inflationary costs ourselves. And um, that's what we've budgeted on, that eleven three six number. And uh, we do, I am more confident today than I was last week around this number. And I do expect that um, this number will move forward in the legis, in, in, with the legislature. Um, the governor has the uh, the governor's office. Um, they've done their work and the legislature has until June third to finalize their budget. And I believe this will be the number that we see there. Uh, as, as was mentioned tonight, um, initially our district didn't qualify for summer funding. Uh, the last few years has been a little different model for summer funding. We missed out on summer funding last year, which was disappointing. I expressed my extreme disappointment with the legislature and the governor's office multiple times last year. And what I thought was um, a, a model that didn't serve and prioritize students. We've, we missed on that again this year. But through some um, courageous conversations and some work with some key people in the legislature, our district and communities qualified for eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to support uh, ongoing summer learning with our students. We're really excited about that. You may have read an article recently in the Oregonian where many districts are turning the money away. Because they just don't have the capacity to, to, to make this happen. Um, I just want to thank our team, my team, and our staff, because when we got the money, that was never a question. It wasn't a question of, it's hard for adults to do this. So our staff has stepped up from nutrition services to transportation to our staff, that's licensed staff, classified staff, administrative staff. We stand ready to serve kids. And so I want to thank the legislature publicly for approving these, this funding and thank our staff um, for organizing quickly to do this. And we've got a great plan for extended summer learning. Excited about that. I'll mention, yes, I thank you. That's great. Uh, one other just quick um, note here, uh, in, uh, it's a, it's a budgetary note if you will, but um, there was a Senate bill that was passed relative to PERS, which is the public and employee retirement system to offset some of the liability to, to effectively buy down the rate. I'm looking, Cheryl, I think I'm saying this correctly. Um, is, is, we've talked about before, our PERS rates have been a significant hit on our budget. Um, and what was tricky this year is for those districts who planned a site account to offset what is a global market fluctuation. They and we, because we are one of those districts that have done that, that were twenty-something, um, really were, I think um, disadvantaged in the increase in the rate. And um, so we're grateful that um, the, the state did have some funding for PERS that they've used that to buy down the rate. That will help us to the tune of probably around half a million dollars potentially next year. So that's, um, that legislation has passed, that's been approved. And that will be a, uh, an add in our budget to, to further serve students. Um, with that, happy to host any questions, but thank you for the time for the report tonight.
No questions?
I have one question. What's the status of the fish hatchery after the flood?
I think, yeah, go ahead. I, I have, Cheryl.
I was out there, but Cheryl's probably seen it as well. Um, it's a little worse for the wear right now. There's some worse, um, some work that needs to be done. Um, it isn't fully functional, but they're still able to do part of the traditional um, eggs, and they weren't able to get the fry and acclimate the fry in the same way, but they did raise some eggs and were able to release those. Do you want to add to that?
I'll just say, we did have pretty major concern about the bridge. Which was, we thought we'd lose, actually. And there had to be, we did um, some engineering, there was some engineering work to ensure it was still safe. There was also, uh, we were concerned about the sewer. There's a sewer line that went across there as well. We were concerned, however, we learned that um, it had been um, vacated. It was not an active sewer line. We were concerned about that, uh, as we saw the flooding go up and there was an area that several of us were out visiting, is, is it sits in a space that was pretty impacted. Uh, we were all glad to um, learn that that was not an active sewer line. I thought it was. And so it was good to know that. So it's uh, as many things, uh, it's, it's going to do what nature does, which is recover. And uh, we were grateful to be able to use that this year.
Thank you for your questions. At this time, we will move on to directors' reports. I will start with Director Shirk Cliff. Do you have anything that you would like to share?
Sure, since this is my last one, I, I might as well finally say something. I just got a quick story. A little over four years ago, I was just a ticked-off parent, um, that was upset with some of the COVID stuff going on, and I thought you can either be ticked off a home or you can join the school board and do something about it. So with that thought in mind, I went and I asked a couple of people I looked up to mentors, people who were in the public eye in Roseburg, and I said, what do you guys think about this? And they unanimously told me not to do it. They said, this is a terrible thing. Don't ever join the school board. Um, it's only decisive, you're only gonna get yelled at, you're never gonna be able to solve any problems. Um, and you're dealing with people's kids, so everyone's emotionally charged up all the time. You're gonna get just this, like the worst side of politics ever, because you're combining children. After four years of doing this, they were completely wrong. This has been a wonderful experience. Um, and I owe that to all the people here at this table and some of you out here in the crowd. The staff, um, my current board members, former board members. Also, yeah, thank you to the board members, both past and present, um, for for dealing with these problems in a way that um, left politics out of it. We had, we've had disagreements, we've had I wouldn't even say we've had arguments, but we've, we disagreed on things, but we've always kept the strategic plan in place first and foremost, and focused on the children and had discussions. And I, I just can't understand why perhaps the state legislator, even the national people can't operate like we have seemed to operate in the past four years. And also with that being said, I want two special thank yous, Cheryl. Um, I think one of the reasons why this operates is because we have someone as wonderful as yourself to um, provide us with the details and the financial um, numbers that we need to make these decisions and fill us in when we're not as smart as you are. Um, but you're always around and you present things perfectly. Um, and you apply for a lot of things and do a lot of work that people don't see. We couldn't do that without you. And last but not least, Mr. Corden himself, um, I also have to give you all the credit. Your tireless work. Um, your commitment to the children, to the teachers, to the students. Um, I've been blown away. Um, if you ever want to make more money and work half as many hours, come work in the private sector. But you're built for this job and, and it shows. I, I hope um, you are here for many, many years to come. And like I said, the last four years have been a pleasure because of all of you and I'm just thankful to be here. And I know, I can speak from personal experience working with Jared, that when, when things in a large organization like this, some things will fall through the cracks uh, every once in a while. But Jared has proven to be someone who will jump on those cracks immediately when they come around and fix them. Um, and that's part of the reason why he's the wonderful superintendent of the year. So, thank you all. I can't follow that. That's, that was amazing. It was great working with you, Andrew. I, I am going to miss you. And I wish you were, uh, selfishly wishing uh, that you'd stay. Uh, but life. Um, I, I also kind of want to parallel, uh, commend Ms. uh, Ms. King for um, addressing her uh, negative experience in the, in the district. Um, I want to parallel Superintendent Corden's uh, sentiments. Um, takes a lot of courage to, to go up to a microphone and address things that are very difficult. I'm, I'm willing to stay after the meeting to, to address it and hopefully make things better. Um, I'm sure Superintendent Corden feels the same way. Um, I also want to um, thank Principal Thompson. This is a magical elementary school. I have uh, two sons here. Um, from the Hock ceremonies to um, Hugh yelling at me a hundred yards away right when I get out of my pickup truck, one thirty-two, like raising his hand, because we all have numbers when we come up, you know. Um, it, it, everything about this school is amazing and you make it amazing. And I want to thank you very much. My kids are, are just having the best uh, elementary school experience they could ever possibly have, and it's incredible. Um, and I'll stop or I'll start crying or something, geez.
Sure, I, I won't cry either. So, uh, Andrew, hey, thank you so much for all your work. The gas card wasn't my idea. I think it was Rod's, just so you know. But uh, you, you've been um, you don't talk a lot, but when you say something, it, it is solid and, and it's helpful. So thank you for that. So, good luck and, and, and your new adventures, wherever you, whatever you end up doing, you'll be successful, I'm sure. And Cheryl, I, boy, those numbers, when you start, the numbers are magical when you, when you move them around. So um, thank you for your, your dedication and your work. Um, it's been amazing. So. And um, and Jill, Dr. Weber, uh, thank you for all that you're doing with the curriculum. It's amazing to be on, on the committees. Um, it's been a pleasure, so.
I'm gonna have a little popery of a couple of things. The first is ditto to Cheryl and Andrew. And wonderful, but exceptional board to work with and exceptional staff to support us. Last month I went to Fullerton for Carnival. It was really good turnout, family fun, lots of prizes and lots of volunteers. And they were all smiling. And that's, reflects, Fullerton has a special environment too. I think all of our elementaries do, but the number of volunteers at that carnival was really spec, really, really spectacular. Just a really quick comment on our election results. Low voter turnout. Um, but almost all the voters voted for the three of us that were running, like ninety-eight percent. So that was nice, although it was a low turnout. Um, and also on the evening, I went out and removed twenty-five signs around town. They were all down that evening. Um, during May, I did coordination with staff. It was with Stephanie and I commendation to her on the long-range plan. Her staff support was notable. She was very patient. She understood what I was trying to accomplish for the board and improve that document to reflect, I think how we would like to characterize our work for the community. And I think she really helped on that. And then lastly, I saw a report recently in um, Oregonian, and it was about measles vaccination rates. And I was very pleased to see that all but one of our schools were in the medium or high ninety percents. And that, that was, that was really good. And uh, and um, and it just came across that I thought this is really interesting, published in the Oregonian and I believe that is a healthy thing for our fa, families to do.
Once again, Cheryl, thank you for everything. You're wonderful. And Andrew, you too. I do remember the four years ago. Yep, it's pretty interesting. Um, but I always knew you were gonna be an outstanding board member. And um, and I've learned new things from you. And I know it's hard for old dogs to learn new tricks, but um, thank you. And I wish that you were gonna still be with us. Um, have your, your replacement will be this old hat, so it'll slide dry. And so thank you so much.
I too would like to thank Cheryl. What I appreciate about Cheryl the most is she takes, I'm not a numbers person at all. And she takes the most complex things going on with budgets, and she's able to explain it in a way that I understand. And I really have appreciated that. And then Andrew, all I can say, he is no nonsense. And we work together with the contract negotiations, and I'm like, ready to give away the farm. And uh, and, and he is not. And um, but he still said he wanted to work with me again on something like that, which I scratched my head on, but he was a pleasure to work with. And I really appreciate his honesty. Um, so I have a question. So do you know an outstanding school board member who makes a difference in your school district, community, college, or education service district? I have the answer. Yes, we do. And that's why our board has nominated Rod Cotton, Oregon School Board Member of the Year. So now, the OSBA is not gonna announce their winner until September or October. You know, they're, they don't give you an exact date. But whatever the final outcome, Rod, you're the winner. So I would like to read what we have submitted on why you're the winner. I would like to read what we have submitted on why you're the winner. Now, this award is based on advocacy, leadership, and student achievement. So Rod Cotton has been a steadfast advocate for students throughout his more than thirty years of service to Roseburg School District. He has committed to data-informed decision-making and remaining accountable to our school, our community through transparency and long-term stewardship. Rod champions opportunities for all students, recognizing the unique needs and challenges that rural communities face. He is a steadfast supporter of closing opportunity gaps for students experiencing poverty, homelessness, disabilities, and other barriers to achievement. Through board resolutions such as the March twenty-twenty-five call for the federal reauthorization of the Secure Rural Schools Act, he gives voice to the needs of rural and underfunded districts. Rod actively tracks student progress and well-being through his support of the district's integrated programs plan, which outlines goals and literacy, social-emotional learning, attendance, and post-secondary pathways. He supports the district's use of di-bells, i-ready, and map data to monitor academic growth. Because not only do you have to say all these things, you have to prove it. So these things are all provable. Okay? Just want you to know that. He has continually emphasized the importance of safe and effective teaching and learning environments, supporting multiple efforts to pass a capital improvement bond in the district to address the inequities caused by aging school infrastructure. While school board measures have not passed, Rod has remained action-oriented. He promotes alternative approaches such as seismic retrofit grants, long-range facilities planning, and community partnerships. Most recently, he encouraged support of the district's partnership with Amqual Community College to construct a medical careers pathway facility. This innovative collaboration will give students access to high-tech, industry-aligned career training in a cost-effective and forward-thinking model. And that's for years to come. It's awesome. As far as leadership goes, in over thirty years of service, Rod continues to bring consistency, historical knowledge, and institutional trust to the Roseburg School Board. He has served multiple terms as both chair and vice chair, providing clarity to new and experienced board members while modeling respective and ethical governance, which I very much appreciate. Rod promotes high-quality education by reinforcing the importance of the district's strategic plan, which seeks to ensure all students receive the care, support, and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful futures. He regularly emphasizes that, love this, that the board must act in a unified body, committed to shared goals rather than individual agendas. He encourages professional preparation and fact-based discussions, cultivating a healthy governance culture. Rod has also chaired various board committees, currently leading the Buildings and Sites Committee tasked with capital planning, school safety upgrades, and infrastructure renewal. Under his leadership, the committee has helped prioritize projects such as security vestibles, electric locking systems, and ADA improvements. He was instrumental in moving forward funding for the district's participation in the construction of a medical careers pathway facilities in partnership with Amqual Community College. I also want to mention that it was a year ago in last December when we had a parent, more than one parent, talk about inequities with their students, biracial students and stuff. And Rod took that and ran and, and started now that we have a whole program and a nice working committee of people who are handling that, and we're making strides in that. Thank you, Rod. Student achievement. Rod consistently advocates for high expectations backed by strong support systems, ensuring students grow academically, socially, and emotionally. He supports a robust strategic plan focused on improving literacy, raising the graduation rate, expanding career and technical education, enhancing mental health at services, and cultivating inclusive environments where all students feel safe and supported. He celebrates whole-child development, championing, championing strong academics, character, leadership, arts, and athletics. Through his votes and public remarks, he reinforces the board's responsibility to ensure that every student has access to growth opportunities and world, real-world readiness. As Director of Operations for local McDonald's stores, Rod facilitated the donation of gift certificates for students honored for their achievements during monthly school board meetings. And since Rod's initial term in nineteen ninety-four, McDonald's has donated approximately three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year in gift cards for our students. Rod also recognizes the connection between staff support and student outcomes. He has been an advocate for competitive compensation, improved benefits, and strong professional learning systems. During collective bargaining, he supports respectful, solutions-oriented negotiations that lead to staff satisfaction and retention, critical factors in student success. His respect for educators, great respect for educators, has helped build trust and stability, especially during times of transition and change. So Rod Cotton has been a dedicated supporter of Roseburg Public Schools, attempts to pass a capital improvement bond to address health, safety, security, and efficacy in our schools. He also supports our community's children through his work with Greater Roseburg Young Life, and has led our district through productive collective bargaining processes. So that is our, our School Board Member of the Year. And so I will be shocked if he does not win. But regardless, you're our winner. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. So with that, all of our regular business is concluded, and I adjourn this meeting.